Hello, my name is Pastor Randy Powell. I serve the First Baptist Church of Franklin, Pennsylvania, as I have since 2012. Before that, I was the pastor of the First Baptist Church of Palo, Michigan. Before that, I was a graduate of Cornerstone University. And that is one of the reasons why I'm making this video this morning. One of the reasons why I wrote the letter in question to the Board of Trustees was because I am a graduate of Cornerstone. I spent time there as an undergrad in religion, philosophy, and Greek. And then I came back and got a teaching certificate in English and social studies soon after. So the university is very important to me and very formative in my thinking, my character, my ministry, so many ways. And that's why I'm here today. As an evangelical pastor, as a person by any reasonable metric, as a conservative, as someone who wholly supports the authority of Scripture, the teachings of the church, everything down the line. And yet, I find myself in serious disagreement, nay, opposition, to the current direction of Cornerstone University as led by its president and its board. So that's why we're here. I'm going to talk about the letter, going to work through it, and show what it contains. And then, of course, in the description, there will be an opportunity to click on the link to sign. If you are a pastor who is an alumni, those are the people we are first and foremost hoping will sign this letter. But if you are an alumni who doesn't serve as a pastor, there's a different form to sign, please sign. Or if you're a stakeholder of any other kind, if you support Cornerstone in prayer, if you support it financially, if you have a connection to it, or to a general concern for Christian higher education, there is a place for you to sign as well. So let's dig in, let's look at the letter itself. It came out on October 9th and will be delivered to the Board after the 1st of December. So here we go. "To the Board and Administration of Cornerstone University, this letter is written on behalf of the undersigned alumni who have been called to serve in the role of pastoral leadership within the body of Christ." So why this tech? I was having a conversation online with other frustrated alumni, some of them pastors, about the state of things at Cornerstone, about the concerns that we share about how people have been treated, et cetera. We'll get into those. And my idea was maybe the Board, or the administration, or even President Moreno, maybe they will listen if a significant number of pastors who graduated from the school, who clearly love the school, and who in their careers, in their callings, in their daily lives are shepherd of the sheep, right, have that responsibility on their shoulders, that responsibility of leadership. If we appeal on that one-to-one kind of thing, "You are leading this institution, we lead these institutions, we understand the cares and concerns, we understand the pressures of budgets, we understand the need to focus mission," all of those things. If we say, "Something is not right here, please dialogue with us, please, we need to do better than this." So that's what this is. This is an attempt at dialogue, an attempt at an open and honest conversation about these issues. It's a love letter of hope. Let's look at the letter itself. "We write to express deep concern, as shepherds of the sheep, about the conduct of Dr. Gershan Moreno Riano as president. The approval of this conduct by the Board of Trustees and the transformative vision that has been set forth for the future of Cornerstone University as first and foremost a market-driven career preparation institution with an identity defined by a political agenda. We believe that on its current course, many pastors like us and parents will be unable to, in good conscience, recommend Cornerstone University." So let me begin by saying that's absolutely where my heart is at this point. I have a daughter, she's nine, so I've got a few years before we have to talk about college destinations. But before this current administration, I would have gladly said, "Go to Cornerstone." Clara, it's a great school, that's my daughter's name, Clara, it's a great school. It was so helpful to me and the professors, the fellow students. It was just, it was a great experience. I would have said that. And I wrote a blog piece earlier this year, even before some of the recent troubling decisions that said, "I can't do that anymore. I'm not sending my daughter to a school that's on a course like this." We'll look at the reasons in a minute. This is our concern, this is our fear. This is the passion that drives this letter is the idea that Cornerstone is becoming something that we wouldn't recognize and we wouldn't have gone to. If this was the reputation of the school, if this is how it conducted itself, I would not have gone there. I would have gone somewhere else and hoping that there is somewhere else like still where like Cornerstone used to be. We'll look at the market-driven thing, it's one of the main points in a moment, and the political agenda. So those are two of the main points, I'll get to those in a moment, as well as the conduct of President Moreno. Those are all main points that will be delineated below, so we'll get to those. I wanted to start just by saying, this is serious business to us as pastors. Someone says, "Where should I go to school? What's a good Christian school?" I don't take that lightly. I'm not going to answer that on a whim. It's going to be based on what I know. And what I know right now is deeply troubling. So let's talk about our experience. Our experience at Cornerstone and/or, because some went to both, or just the seminary, Grand Rapids Theological Seminary, or as it's now known, Cornerstone Theological Seminary, involved much more than gaining knowledge and marketable skills that would enable us to have a successful career. Now, we learned these things, certainly, but they were not the heart of our experience. We were not taught what to think from a singular viewpoint, but how to think critically and biblically in ways that would fortify us for the challenges of ministry. I grew up in an independent Baptist church. My pastor, one pastor my whole life, Pastor James Frank, he's gone home to be the Lord. I spoke at his funeral and got really choked up because he was so formative in raising me in the way of the Lord. But Cornerstone was more than that education I had at that singular church because at Cornerstone, I had a variety of professors who taught me not what to think about this passage, or that passage, or this idea, or that idea, but how to look at those ideas and judge them biblically, to weigh them, to contemplate them. It was, the skills we were learning were analytical skills, skills that help us as we acquire wisdom in ministry. Right? If I had been taught a singular viewpoint, I don't know what would have happened to me in ministry because it would have crumbled in the real world where I deal with real people and a changing world, and a changing culture, and a changing political landscape, and all of these things, and myself changing as I become a husband and a father, and as I become someone who's staring at middle age, right? You say to yourself, "One viewpoint is not going to carry me all through this. I need a biblical worldview." And that's what Cornerstone taught us in every class. It wasn't just about skills, it was about developing and growing. So it was an amazing experience and education. Now, and here's the part that really hits home. We treasured as mentors and friends the professors and staff that were a part of our faith journey. These God-honoring men and women were one of the primary reasons why Cornerstone was a valuable partner to the church in furthering the gospel. I can't speak to anyone who is at Cornerstone today. I've been graduated since 1998, and then I came back in 2000 and 2001. It's been a while, I don't know if anyone's still there. And I wouldn't blame them if they've all retired since then, it's been a while. The people that I was with, you know, the people that shaped me, you know, Dr. Mayers, Andy Smith, Webster, Brew, and then in history department, Cole, in English, Fabbish. These, Dr. Cole, Dr. Fabbish, these were amazing professors. Their character as men and women of God was impeccable. They were mentors and they were friends. I'll never forget that Dr. Mayers picked me my senior year when he had to go to a conference, I think it was in Oregon or something, for three days. He said, "Randy, will you teach my 100 level classes while I'm gone?" It was incredible experience, teaching these wide-eyed freshmen, these subjects. I taught two classes for him. It was incredible. But that was a partnership. We did that journey together, class after class. They were amazing. And I have no reason to believe that the staff of this generation is any less amazing. Because that was the culture, that was the culture of the professors and the staff. They were deeply committed to the students, they were deeply committed to discipleship, to the Word of God, to our apostolic and universal faith in Jesus Christ. I mean, my goodness, they were good people. Hold that thought for what's coming up. "So our love for this institution and what it has meant to our lives in ministry has led us to react with sorrow and concern to the numerous credible reports of fundamental changes to the university and seminary and the conduct of its leadership in affecting these changes. These changes and how they were made do not reflect well upon the institution of higher Christian education that we once knew, or upon the reputation of the gospel." So we love this place, this institution, and all that it meant in our lives, all that it has meant through the generations, going back multiple generations to the church. And we have heard and we have seen, again, I'm in Pennsylvania, I do not know these things firsthand because I'm not there. I'm not the staff, I'm not the professor. But we have seen many credible reports from those who were, all right? This is not gossip, these are people who were on staff, people who were professors, saying, "This is what I experienced, this is what happened to me." In addition to, of course, the words and reports and actions of the administration right out in the open, all right? So we are, this, again, for me, this is not personal in the sense that none of the folks involved here do I know personally. But it is deeply personal to me because this is the university that molded and shaped me in so many ways. And when we see fundamental changes, when the new administration says, "We need to eliminate the dross, we need to refine Cornerstone University and get rid of the things," and using that biblical language, right? The language that the Bible uses for how we remove sin from our lives. And that's how they refer to the removal of people, people who honored God with their service to this institution. It's shocking to the conscience and it wakes us up as alumni and says, "No, this cannot happen." Not only the fact that radical changes were made, but they were made in ways that are not consistent with love, joy, peace, patience, kindness, goodness, gentleness, faithfulness, and self-control. That's the only standard, the fruit of the Spirit. We must conduct ourselves in these ways. I must conduct myself in this way in pastoral ministry, or I fail. I must conduct myself this way in this ministry in trying to help Cornerstone University with honor and integrity and honesty, or I will fail. So these four things are concerns. There are only four because it's a letter that is meant to be read and signed, and it cannot be a book, all right? It can't even be a chapter, it's got to be short. So we boiled it down by four, and by "we" I mean myself and my collaborators. I haven't mentioned them yet, I had two primary collaborators in this. One is a fellow pastor, a fellow alumni, a fellow cross-country team member who graduated after me, he's younger than me, who I deeply respect, Pastor Noah Filippiac. He serves in downtown Grand Rapids in an urban church, doing a ministry that I deeply respect, cross-cultural ministry. It's something that is very much needed because the church is far too segregated in the Western world. And I'm all for championing what he's doing there. And he's also done amazing work through a book that he wrote and a lot of other things that he's done around that in helping men overcome addiction to pornography. So two very important ministries that he's involved in. He and I have gone, talked about this back and forth all year, really, because we had connected because of cross-country at Cornerstone. And so he and I went through and narrowed it down to four things. And then Dr. Turner, Dr. David Turner, former seminary professor. I didn't have the pleasure of having him as my professor, but many, many of you did. And someone whose reputation, someone whose service is impeccable, has that inside information, that knowledge from having been there about the people involved. And so he also offered some edits and some, you know, this phrase, some clarity to make sure that we had the facts straight, to make sure that we were saying everything the right way. And so those two collaborated deeply with me, and I give them credit. And thanks for this, it's certainly not a one-man show. But our concerns are these four, there are other things. This is the heart of it, this is what we are choosing to focus on. Again, if you're saying, "Well, wait a minute, what about this, what about that?" Again, we can't have everything in here. This is enough to certainly get the ball rolling and start the conversation if the administration is willing, if the Board is willing, if hearts are open. Let's take a look at the first one. The first one, and this is, this all by itself would be a serious issue. Toxic leadership. Have we not seen enough toxic leadership in the church? My goodness, it's a plague. Toxic leadership that has manifested itself in repeated examples of the treatment of professors and staff in ways that are unworthy of an organization acting in the name of Jesus Christ. This includes, but is not limited to, demands for unquestioning loyalty, intimidation of staff and faculty, as well as ignoring their concerns, the purging of voices attempting to respectfully express differing viewpoints, and most recently, the abrupt revoking of the signed contracts of eight faithful faculty members, including nearly the entire humanities department and the seminary dean. So this is big, right? Toxic leadership is not what the church, or a Christian charity, or a Christian institution of higher education need. We cannot have that. Paul has showed us, has written in the New Testament, Timothy, about what it takes to lead the church on any of these levels. And this is not it. He's talked about those qualities of humility and patience and kindness, and that is what we need, and that's not what we're getting here, I'm sad to say. Unquestioning loyalty, that's not what we need, all right? The people here at my church, if they have an issue, we're Baptists for crying out loud, if they have an issue, they are expressly told again and again, "Come to the Board, come to pastor, tell us what it is, let us know what is bothering you." And we got a quarterly business meeting, annual budget meeting, I know, everybody loves those, coming up on Sunday. And if you've got an issue in that meeting, stand up and say it. And if that's, if it's contrary to what I've said or what the Board said, we're going to listen. We sure better listen because that's the way this works. We don't have unquestioning loyalty. And yet, there was an attempt at a loyalty oath, there's no other way to say that. It was dropped, but my goodness, that it was even contemplated. We've seen many reports of staff and faculty feeling intimidated, feeling ignored. And honestly, most of the, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, most of the people who signed the letter of no confidence when President Gershan Moreno first arrived, aren't there anymore. They've all been, they've been let go, they've been fired. And then, to top it all off, probably the most, I don't know if I call it the most shameful, but a deeply shameful thing this summer. You had eight faculty members who had signed a contract, and they had just changed the handbook to say that there's no such thing as, you know, that everybody's an at-will employee. But they just signed a contract, you gave them a contract, you asked them to sign it, and then a couple weeks later, you're all gone. No cause, no explanation, just you're all gone. Gutting the humanities department, just gutting the thing. We don't really need that. And treating a seminary dean like that, my goodness, come on. This is not, this is not acceptable leadership, not for a church, not for a charity, not for a Christian institution of higher learning. This is not acceptable leadership from the president and everyone underneath him who's been a part of this. This is not acceptable, we can't have this. Secondly, and this is connected to the first, a lack of honesty and transparency when communicating with Cornerstone's employees, students, and alumni. This includes, but it's not limited to, the financial status of the university, the way in which professors and staff were terminated, projects and initiatives that were abandoned, and policies that were changed without input from those affected by them. Basically, the whole idea that we're going to do what we're going to do and input from you is not needed, not expected, not wanted. And we're not going to talk about it, we're not going to explain it, we're not going, yeah. There's just lack of transparency and honesty, it's a sign. When you see an institution, a church, that is in trouble, one of the telltale signs is a lack of communication, an unwillingness to engage on the topics, a circling of the wagons, so to speak. Yeah, that's a sign, it's not a good sign, it's an unhealthy sign. So that's number two. Number three, and this one really made me sit up and take notice when it came out in July. "The Vision Championed by Dr. Gershan Moreno Riano, as expressed in his Fox News essay," and you need to be a, have an account on Fox News to access it, it's behind the, it's not a paywall, but anyway. So if you try to find it, and that's what happens, but it's still on there. Sorry, sidetracked. "That leans heavily upon more profitable asynchronous online instruction, cheaper adjunct professors, and the purposeful diminishment of the humanities department. We recognize that financial realities must be taken into account, but these realities cannot be the driving force behind what Cornerstone is and does. Quality instruction for all students in the humanities is essential to the development of a robust Christian worldview and ethic. Without this instruction, Cornerstone University is losing one of the pillars of its character." Let's dive into this. I wrote a blog piece, you can go find that on my blog, about this essay where I interacted with the individual lines in it. It was a shocking essay from the president of a university. I spent 10 years in high school, public education, English primarily, but also social studies. I deeply value the humanities, what art and music and literature and poetry and all of the rest, history, theology, philosophy, what they can teach us as Christians about our humanity, about our relationship to God and each other. The humanities are deeply important. And Dr. Gershan Moreno Riano's essay tears into them, treats them like the enemy, like something to be purged for the sake of protecting the university. And I get that he was largely talking about, at least that's what I thought when I first read the essay, he was largely talking about secular universities where sometimes the humanities departments have indeed gone astray and are not fulfilling their mission. But then this is what happens to Cornerstone's humanities department. And there is not a single credible accusation against these professors that says they were not, they were not sharing a Christian worldview, they were not teaching things from a biblical standard. That's not what it was. It was simply, "We don't need this anymore. We're going to make all, we're going to go with adjunct professors, we're going to go with online instruction. Are they more profitable, are they cheaper, are they easier for the university? Absolutely. Are they better? Not at all." I know this, I teach an online, it's not asynchronous, but I teach an online class for the denomination that I serve on Baptist History and Polity. It's online because I'm teaching people all over Pennsylvania and Delaware, and sometimes beyond, and we can't get to the same place, not reasonably. But I know what we lose when we do instruction online. When you're not there to have a chat with the professor after class or in his or her office, you lose things. Yes, it's cheaper, yes, it's easier. But it's not better for the professors. My wife was an adjunct professor at Lansing Community College for a few years. I get why institutions are going to adjunct professors, they save so much money because you don't have to pay any health insurance, you don't have to pay any retirement benefits. You can pay a much cheaper rate for teaching one class than a full-time professor would receive. Yes, you can save money, but my goodness, it's not about money. It shouldn't be just about money. I get that Cornerstone has to take financial situations into account, I get that. But the last 30 years, the school has been growing, the campus buildings have been growing, the student population has been growing. What are we doing? The case was not made to the stakeholders to say that, you know, "These are the financial realities, we need to trim here, we need to trim there." Just the humanities department was gutted. And they all had signed contracts for the next year, and that means that in the summer, none of them, maybe, I hope, I pray that one or two of them were able to find employment in the fall, but most universities have already set their teaching schedule for the fall by then. So basically, you just guaranteed all these folks are going to be without work for a year, people with families to feed. This is just not, it's not how we're supposed to operate. And losing the, I mean, okay, I get it if you're there for nursing, if you're there for something, the engineering sciences, you know, whatever, you might not enjoy your time in the humanities department, I get it. Some people hate their history class, their English class, or their philosophy class, I get it. But to every one of those students, the humanities are deeply impactful in shaping that Christian worldview, which is an important part of the mission. How can you shape a Christian worldview in these students? How can you help them learn how to think in biblical ways without the humanities being at the heart of it? I don't get it, I just don't get it. I can't, I can't imagine how that could possibly work. Yeah, that's personal to me, it's personal to me, I'm a child of the humanities, right? Social studies, English, religion, philosophy, Greek, that's my heart, my soul. It is these things. And again, I think of the men and women that taught me. And I think about how upset I would be if they did this to Dr. Cole and Dr. Fabbish. I would be livid. So I have to hold that same standard for the people whose names I, who I don't know, I haven't met them. They were treated like this, it's not acceptable, we can't do this. And number four, and this was the hardest one to write, I'll be honest, this was the hardest one to write, hardest to get the wording right. We went back and forth a number of times, what about this phrase, what about that word? To try to get it right, to keep this letter from being dismissed as just, that's just the woke mob. uh, that's just the woke mob. Uh that's what we didn't want, we don't want the administration, the president, the board to simply say, "Oh, they're just woke pastors," which again is a ridiculous statement uh given, given uh where I come from, where Noah comes from, and all the, the names on that list. These are evangelical folks, most of them very conservative in their, in their uh, again, my politics are, are, are not public, um because I, I've made that decision, I, I think it's for the, the sake of my ministry, uh but, but in many ways. Uh and, and yet, we look at this and say, "No, no," in part because I am a Baptist. So let's look at it, number four. Significant steps in the direction of aligning the school with one political party and one cultural viewpoint instead of the Kingdom of God. Politicizing the gospel by bending it to the right or to the left is a grave theological error that marginalizes true brothers and sisters in Christ all over the world whose faith and hope are in Jesus, but whose politics or culture may differ. Like the church and all of its members, Cornerstone should seek first the Kingdom of God, not any transient human political agenda. Again, I grew up in a small town, Serhak, Michigan, independent Baptist church. I had one viewpoint when I went to Cornerstone, it was the only one I'd known. And really know deeply people from different uh parts of the, the, the Christian church. Didn't really know anyone who, who wasn't uh, a, a Republican, who wasn't uh rural. Uh that was, who wasn't white, it was a very narrow upbringing because that's the town. I don't fault anyone there for it, but that's the view that, that I came with. At Cornerstone, my eyes were opened to the fact that, you know what? The church is pretty broad in the world today, and the church going back two thousand years had a lot of different viewpoints on a lot of different things. Faithful men and women of God, our ancestors in the faith, who didn't see things just as we see things, and some of the things that we hold so dear weren't issues in previous generations, they weren't part of the conversation, now they are. Alright, it, it, the church is not a monolith, the gospel is not a monolith, it is for the globe and for all of, all of the, the age. So there are faithful men and women, hear me on this, please, there are faithful men and women serving God in Africa, in Asia, in South America, in, in Europe, and here in the United States, who do not agree with me or with you on everything, and that's okay. They believe that Jesus Christ is the Son of God, that he died for their sins, that he was raised to life for their justification, that he will come again to judge the living and the dead. They believe these things in, in the creeds, they believe these things. They live by faith. But maybe they don't agree with us on, on tax policy or immigration policy or uh, or, or issues uh involving any host. I just picked two of the things that have been on every commercial, we got an election coming up all, all day long. They might not agree with that. Cornerstone didn't used to be a place where you went for one viewpoint, where you went for one cultural and political viewpoint. It's not what it was, it's not what it was about, I didn't get that from my professors. And tell me what to think, they taught me how to think. And it's so much more valuable. There were schools I could have gone to where they would have taught me how to think, and I looked down on them, I'll be honest about it, I looked down on those schools, I'm not gonna name them here, that's not fair, but I looked down on the, the people I knew that went there and the education they got. Because that's fundamentalism. And fundamentalism is bitter, or not bitter, brittle, sorry, wrong word. Uh it is bitter too, uh brittle. When it gets bumped, when it gets shaped, when it gets moved by life, it cracks. Because it's not how to think, it's what to think. And yeah, I, I, this topic animates me, I, I, I have a six-hour seminar uh on, on my blog uh where I dig into like sixty different passages of scripture to show that, that the church was never meant to be uh political, the church was never meant to, to seek power, uh the church was meant to serve, uh that our citizenship is in heaven, et cetera, et cetera, I delve into it deeply. Uh I've been writing against Christian nationalism for a decade, okay? So this stuff, this stuff gets under my skin uh because I deal with it right here in Franklin, Pennsylvania, I deal with it in this community. Uh I, I, I oppose local folks uh again, as best I can with honor and integrity and compassion, who are pushing Christian nationalism, pushing the idea that, that we should take charge uh and, and get everybody in line. Um because I'm deathly afraid of what power does to the church. I believe that Lord Acton was right. Power tends to corrupt, absolute power tends to corrupt absolutely, I believe that because I know human nature. And so yeah, I'm very animated by, by this issue, but I'm deeply saddened by it as well. The idea that Cornerstone would become just another one of those places where people from this group and only this group go. Where all, where the students on campus, if they didn't belong to that, that way of thinking, they'll get shaped, they'll get molded, we'll, we'll squeeze them into it, and we'll, we'll graduate out, people, little foot soldiers for the culture war, for the political war. Those places already exist. Uh and, and, and there's more than enough of them already. What, what's an endangered species? An endangered species are, are places like Wheaton, that's one of the few, few I know that's still doing it, uh where, where students go and are challenged, where, where their eyes are opened, where, where they're given uh the breadth and the depth of Christianity and the church so that they can understand the world that we live in. Not so they can fight it, so they can serve it. And it's, and the people in it with compassion and understanding. So, I mean, again, the education I received was amazing, and it was deeply a blessing. Now, life taught me things as well, right? Marriage taught me things, being a father has taught me things, uh doing ministry has taught me things. But I shudder to think how I would have reacted to some of those challenges in my life had I had that lesser education, had I had that singular education. I'll never forget Dr. Mayer's, uh again, I've brought him up before, uh his thesis. A balanced apologetic both-hand, uh it's on my shelf over there. Uh man, that was a tough class, Philosophy of Religion, 8:00 AM. Um I was the only one awake, uh there was only, I think, five of us. I was the only one willing to answer his questions, it was, it was a tough class, he's a tough professor. But I will never forget what he taught us, that in the Bible, some things are not either or, they're both and, and that's on purpose. Blew my mind, that's on purpose. God wants us to hold these things in tension, he wants us to wrestle with them in the real messy lives that we live. And I've seen that in so many ways uh in, in, in ministry, as I deal with real people and their troubles and their problems and their fears and their anxieties and their hopes. Uh and, and, and that's the kind of value, quality education that, that I, that we are afraid Cornerstone is losing with the diminuation of the uh, the uh Humanities Department, with the purging of, of contrary voices, with, with the desire to have everyone in lockstep, it's, it's sad. So it, it's our hope that this letter will speak to the hearts and minds of board members, administrators, and, and Dr. Gershan Moreno-Riano, and lead to meaningful conversations with concerned students, staff, and alumni like us, in, in the hopes that the future of Cornerstone University will remain firmly connected to the Christ-honoring qualities that have been its hallmark for generations. Dr. Gershan Moreno-Riano didn't need to come in and tear apart Cornerstone. It was a wonderful institution that had served the church and the gospel for generations, faithfully, honorably, and well. So we're submitting this letter, uh it will be given to them once we get as many names on there as we can, uh in our effort to serve and support the church and the gospel. It's what we chose to do, uh it, it's, it's, I don't know. Uh people have asked me, "How much hope do I have for change?" I have hope because I understand that, that, that servants of the gospel speaking prophetically are, are powerful. I haven't gotten any message from on high, God didn't tell me to say this, but he molded me and shaped me uh through my career, through, through my upbringing, through Cornerstone education to be able to have the wisdom to look at this situation and say, "Hey, hey, please, hear us, something is amiss, we need to talk about this. We need to have an honest conversation about what's happening here. We need to be able to plead with you uh to, to reverse course on some of these things, especially the Humanities Department. And we need to call for repentance in the way people have been treated. It's not acceptable. Okay, it would not be acceptable at Amazon, or Google, or Facebook, or one of these massive corporations who treat their workers often so poorly. It wouldn't be acceptable there, it's definitely not acceptable at Cornerstone University to treat people like this. So, okay, that's what we got, I don't wanna ramble on forever. Uh I'll be happy to answer uh questions in the comment section. Uh and please, the links will be below, uh if you are alumni pastor, please sign the, the first link, if, if you're a stakeholder of any other shape or size, um, sign the second link. Um and help us try to make a difference. Thank you.